.............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
All right, seven o'clock.
Okay, at seven o'clock, we have a forum, a planning board meeting for order. First up for general information is Carl Kozinski.
Hi, I'm Uriel.
Hello, Uriel.
Good. So I'm here from Country Nissan because we are at the point now with Nissan Corporate where they want us to renovate the front of our infrastructure. Because I know that this is probably going to be what the planning board wants to see, but we're just looking to open the lines of communication and see if we can come to some sort of an agreement that is comparable for you guys and for Nissan Corporate. So this is, um, this is what they want the front of the building to look like. And we're on Route 9 in Hadley, so we know, um, this is an outline of what the building currently looks like. All of the Nissan franchise buildings have the same look. Um, and their big concern is they want to eliminate the buildings, um, so you have these, the compounds on the front and back of the building that they want to eliminate and streamline. Uh... Really, I'm sorry.
Got to put some kind of mullions in it for lack of a term, okay? Um... I don't think what it would look like today. Getting rid of the...
I'm sorry, do I? I can't believe I didn't bring that.
Get- getting rid of the, of the, the skilled statin part.
...............................................................
Yes, Sudan and I, yeah, Sudan and I provided that to Nissan as the ultimatum, that we either need to have a building that could comply with what Nissan calls Nissan Enready. They basically hold our franchise agreement or would want us to look for a new location.
I don't know how expensive the work's going to do. As you're aware, the, um...
So this is kind of what we want to speak.
If modifications exceed thirty-three percent of the current assessed value of the property, with full compliance, is I think... Yes.
Pretty confident it's going to... The image of the build, the, the actual, like, the, the front of the building already has a lot of windows, so, but it's the shiny silver and the red that I know that the board was about to use about last time we were here.
What's the difference in the size from what's there now to this new one?
So what's there? Currently there is stucco on, on the building right now.
Oh, that's stucco on the building?
Stucco on the building currently, and that's like a metal paneling that you can see on one of the dealerships, like, in the street of Wolfway or Hyundai would have.
Oh, okay.
What's that around the track?
No, it's not.
There's more traffic than we've got now, but the problem is it's open up. And it's kind of worse.
You know, we're not increasing the footprint at all, we're not doing anything in that nature, we're not doing anything in the real structural nature of anything, um, it's just basically siding, uh, removing the stucco.
What, no. Yep. Is there a commission on this, or what should we?
Well, we certainly can get their input on it.
Yeah.
If you would send me an email at planning@hadleyma.org on our webpage.
Yeah, correct. We go backwards, um, and we did, which that's what talks about the people who have contributed everything, am I correct?
Uh, well, part of that's in the bylaw itself, the, uh, design guidelines we just adopted about a year and a half ago.
Oh, okay, so then...
Yeah, I mean, if you, if the design guidelines aren't the law, if you would, what they are is they're a whole bunch of recommendations. You couldn't possibly, I don't think anybody could possibly comply with all of it. But you want to kind of get a, get a feeling for what, what is being looked for.
Okay.
Because it kind of, like, we, we keep saying to start, we're looking for, um, colonial look. What does colonial look mean?
Yeah.
Okay, because you go to Colonial Williamsburg, it's got one look, you go to the Cape, which is colonial, it's a different look. So this kind of tells you what defines colonial.
Does Nissan have dealerships in other historical cities, Arlington, Virginia?
Yes, they do. Yes, they do, and they're willing to work with the town.
What have they, what have they done, for instance, in Arlington?
They said it's, I don't know specifically Arlington, but they...
Yeah, well, they said you're gonna have to either jump or you're gonna leave town, like, they clearly have changed what they've done in other historical areas.
Yeah, no, they, well, no, so what they, they worked with the town, so as long as they can get something that looks similar to what, basically, they said we have to do something that complies, and I asked them if they would give us, um, and I gave them the bylaws and went through and also provided the letter from lots of your here, and asked them for suggestions to come to you with on what would be acceptable for them, um, and they recommended that I come to see you first and get your suggestions and stuff. So I'm kind of playing middleman with.
Well, the one thing is you don't have vertical siding.
Right, I knew that was going to be a concern, yeah.
So, so you've got, you don't have horizontal siding, you don't have shingle, but then again, you don't have, you don't have vertical siding.
It also says flat, prohibits flat siding. Prohibits exterior vertical siding, stucco, planar painted block, and a flat siding appearance. So, okay.
If you were a couple miles down the road, this would be, uh, no problem.
I know.
Um...
And we're, we obviously want to be respectful, and do you...
Yeah, is, is, is there any way you can take, for the, to, I, I'm, I'm not going to design this, but I'm just, just some ideas, you've got the paneling, is there any way you could raise one recessed one, raise one recessed one, you're talking about?
So, yeah, the, the paneling actually comes from a company that Nissan, um, contracts for it, so we can definitely look into that.
Yep.
We literally buy the front just from that, from Nissan, and it's...
You, you, you know what I mean by?
Yeah, yeah, staggering that.
It's like, okay, I mean, that, that at least gets, gets rid of the total flat siding look.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, and it may, that, that, I don't know, that's an idea, I don't, I don't even know what that would look like.
Um...
It might look, it might look ugly.
Yeah.
I don't know, um, but on a drawing, they can easily show that without spending much more than some reasonable, this AutoCAD-type design on it.
Yeah, and that's kind of what you guys are looking for in terms of...
Well, flat siding that you've got is not supposed to equal out. It'd like to seem like a shingle or siding.
I understand what you're saying, clatter or something like that.
But if you've got, you know, paneling or siding that, that sticks out in recess, even if it's only an inch or two.
Creating an illusion.
Creating the illusion of something.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure what that would look like, like I said, but that would certainly get rid of the flat siding appearance. The windows?
So...
Go ahead. Um, you know, um, I don't know, what, what, what would be to put more breaks in the windows of some sort, you know?
Yeah, um, I, actually, it'd be interesting to see what they have done or what they have let dealers do in highly restricted areas. Do you have access to anything of that sort?
I don't, I can request it, but they said that they're willing to, you know, we've expressed, we've actually been going back and forth with them for a while on traffic out on Q9 and, um, our sales efficiency numbers at Hadley to get them to work with us to save the town. So, um, and that's when they told us that they would be willing to move the town and they had us some questions or they would go back to them and they would see if it was reasonable.
How would, if we could ask, how is business over here?
It's very good now.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, it's, um, it's very good. We're, we're very happy at Hadley, the town has been great, and they're sort of pleased after we've kind of had over our last couple years, um, so, yeah, this is very good here.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been three members of the community, we support the local baseball support.
How's the town been supportive?
I'm sorry?
How has the town been supportive?
Well, they stopped coming by and counting our cars, so I, that's probably why, right?
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
So they stopped coming by and counting our cars with a clinker, and they stopped...
They're not bothering you anymore, so they're being supportive.
Yes, yes, I guess in other words to put it basically, yes.
So you are a pre-existing non-conforming structure, so we're not necessarily asking you to retrofit like Freeport, downtown Freeport, Maine.
Okay.
But, um, but let, uh, just send me that email requesting the, um, design guidelines, and I'll shoot those out to you, and, um, then, uh, if you, yeah, if you would talk to corporate and find out what, um, you know, what, how, what kind of accommodations are they willing to make once you see what the Village Center overlay district calls for.
Okay, okay.
Great.
Yeah, that sounds good, we'll do that, and, um, we'll, uh, we'll get there and we'll talk about staggering it and seeing if that's an option with the materials, and then we'll do that.
Okay, okay.
Okay, okay, thank you for your time, yeah, got it, thank you, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mary, Howard?
Well, that sounds good, great.
So, maybe, this is the, the primary issue about how we're going to work out affordability.
The affordable, no, that's, that's safe for later, this is a submission for, um, business use in the aquifer, if I could. Two twenty Russell Street. Uh, approval from two thousand and three.
Don't get me going anywhere, I'm just looking.
Just kind of oriented with the site, these street commons, which we talked about later, is down here, this is hopefully some birth of children and families, we talked about high horse and share coffee for this location. This was an eighty-by-one hundred and forty square foot building, so we've got eleven thousand square feet there. Um, so piggybacking off of that site plan approval, what we're looking to do is to submit an application for a canine daycare, rooming, training facility, and then a canine and feline boarding facility. I want to put those right there, and I'll show you, about colonial design.
Competition comes to happen.
Okay, the, um...
Is the place that one could be in, uh...
Trust, yeah.
Right next to, uh, Randy's place, maybe size is...
Oh, yeah, oh, okay. Where the, where I see you, whatever, the, the deal.
Right, yes.
Probably more appropriate location for it, and so, this is, um, the site plan, and then we've got the elevations.
Is this new construction or...
This is new construction on a portion of the footprint that was originally approved there, so, um, piggybacking off of that site plan approval, we're only going to be asking for business use in the aquifer for this, um, or for the wagon tail is what it's going to be called, it's a forty-eight hundred square foot enclosed space, uh, it's going to have about twenty-four hundred square feet outdoors towards the back, um, we've got, um, little requisite parking, and then we'll be able to provide, even if this has to be expanded a little bit, we've got, um, area two twenty Russell Street has sufficient area. Christine Pratt was here this evening, she was in front of the Board of Health last Tuesday, and they had no issues with, um, anything that was going to occur at the site. So what we're looking to do this evening is to submit, um, to get on the agenda for the aquifer, the business use in the aquifer special permit.
The building's already been approved prior.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
It's been...
Not constructed.
When was it approved then?
Two thousand and three, I believe, is when this plan is dated, and that can probably give you a little bit of history.
Okay, so we will just have to, we will, site plan approval expires in three years, so we will reapply and include site plan approval just to cover the base, okay? Even though the prior approval is expired.
Okay.
My special permit is expired, so rather than take the chance...
In as far as plans that you need, will this could be get away from...
It's a waste of money.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, but to require approval, um...
Sure, you can apply.
It really, it's a re, reapproval of prior plan.
Right, on a smaller footprint as well.
Right, yeah, but raised everything else with approval back then, so that's not a problem.
Right. So then, no erosion and sedimentation control, or just...
You're, unless you're moving where forty thousand square feet.
We're not.
Yeah, you're, but you're maybe fifteen, twenty.
Right.
Okay.
We're having a few questions left to dot, or you can... For you, question, whatever, you're going to create labeling and... Stanford, I'm just...
Yes, I want to thank, thank for having me in your office for helping me get the mailing out on the hundred fifty, uh, letters for the solar field.
Greenleaf, that was the rub.
That was, that was ridiculous. Everybody...
It's just the two sheets that you gave me is fine.
You have that, okay, we'll hold on to it.
Have enough copies to distribute to everyone?
How many have you got in there?
I should have, I think, with that, seven.
With, with the one, with...
And would you make sure that you make another one to deliver to the town clerk with the check?
Yep.
Three, four, five, six, seven, probably not.
This one's a delivery to the town clerk.
Yep, that's fine.
Check.
And you'll take that one back?
September nineteenth, is it?
If it's written, it's just run on the application.
Thank you very much.
Matt Gilian?
Matt Valier, um, he's...
Oh.
That's okay, no worries. Uh, we are working on permitting a small steel residential solar array on Rocky Hill Road for eighty-one, um...
Eighty-one or eighty-three?
Eighty-one, Rocky Hill, Silver Soup Farm in College.
Can I get one for eighty-three? Is that different, is that the same one?
Unless they, they might have two house numbers over there, um, but our contract's for eighty-one, Rocky Hill.
Look on, look on September.
Uh, we have one, but that's already been filed.
Eighty-three, eighty-three's already here last week. Eighty-three's already been filed. Admin review, nine thousand...
Well, Chris came last meeting, um, but I think he didn't have enough copies of all the, um, materials, so maybe this is a separate project, maybe eighty-three's a different project.
No, I put that one out.
Well, eighty-three, but...
Eighty-three, I put, I put eighty-three Rocky Hill Road, I put, I had enough copies, and I put them all out for review.
I have eighty-one, that's...
Nine thousand KW?
Uh, fourteen eight-two.
Oh, this is another, this is another system.
He, somebody mentioned their neighbor was doing it someplace.
Yeah, this is, this is a nine thousand KW, so I wrote it right on here, nine K, this is a fourteen K, so it's a different system.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, so, so, what if eighty-five Rocky Hill came in along the pole, and then seventy-nine along the pole, and then seventy-seven and seventy-five, and it just theoretically went along the whole road, what would happen? We've got a pretty major solar field there, don't we? I'm just throwing the...
Well, they're all, they're all little systems.
They all confide with the setbacks.
But the point is, it, it changes the whole nature of the, uh, neighborhood.
Sure.
All of a sudden, it's just not a one solar field, it's many solar, solar fields running along, and this is what's happening here.
Yeah, uh, well, on this specific site...
I don't even care about it, but I'm just throwing it off for...
Yeah, on this specific site, um, it's going to be pretty well screened in the back of the room right there.
So I think we have a five Tuesday month, so do we have enough time to get it on for...
What is it, a thirty-five day review?
Uh... Yeah, I think it is, so, not quite.
Okay, so I won't make it...
Eighty-one, well, it'd be just thirty-five, it's our, it's September fifth.
All right, I see what you're saying. But if we go into, uh, I'll give this a date tonight, I'll put it over in town hall tonight, the clock starts counting tomorrow.
Okay, so let me just, uh, double check, um, thirty-five days of the referral should be deemed to be a lack of opposition, so, yeah, if you get it in, yeah, I guess we could do it on the fifth.
Okay.
It's just enough time.
That's a, that's a simple review, maybe. What have we got going for, on Larry on the fifth, we're going to be talking about the, uh, what day, did we have allotted for going over the definitions?
I'm not sure you picked a day.
Okay.
But that's a good day.
So, you know, there's also a benefit to putting it on together for the, just the issues that Mike raised, it probably is, as I always say, it's a better argument for town meeting floor than for permitting area.
There's, there's no notices being sent out to people.
Right, but it, it gives us, it frames the issue...
Okay.
Of two side by side.
Okay.
And gives Mike a chance to share his thoughts.
These people don't have any roof areas to put it on?
Not for the capacity that they need, they've got like a hundred and fifty-year-old barn that would probably need some significant structure, like, it's an old barn.
Okay, so you've got, uh, I think we need about three or four copies.
Oh, I've got nine total, if you guys...
I don't need nine, um, give me, give me five.
One, four, three.
Perfect.
Um, and then I do have engineering reports, I don't know if you guys want to see that, but...
You could just, give me one.
It's barely dry, everything, so...
Yeah.
From a business perspective, would PB squared, like every building or, or house in Hadley, have a solar array in their backyard?
Yeah, why not? Yeah.
It's, uh...
I mean, it's a good deal for the homeowner as well, not just the...
Well, but it's a bad deal for the taxpayers.
In what way?
For subsidizing you.
But not the taxpayers, it's electric ratepayers, taxpayers aren't paying anything.
I think most people that pay taxes pay electric bills.
Well, yeah, but it's not a tax issue, it's an electric bill issue.
Theoretically, the electric savings could result in spending.
Dollars are fungible, though.
Yeah.
I mean...
Okay, so we'll see you on September fifth? Yes, okay.
All right, thank you.
Joe, you have a copy?
Hey, guys, um, here's a seat approval for a street sign for the taproom down at Mill Valley.
Oh, yep, okay.
No, Amir was in here, and I think he, um, got the, yeah, no, he got the sign approved, and this is just my sign, and I want to put on that, on his license.
Sixty-five.
That's what he mentioned he gave, so that's how, that's the size I would have it made.
Okay, nothing on the building?
No, uh, nothing on the, on the parking lot side, which doesn't face the street, and I've, I've got a sign above the door that I want to put on there, but, uh, it's the same, same exact sign.
Oh, same exact sign, okay.
Yeah. What's the, uh, street address there? One Mill Valley, Suite C.
When do you expect to be open?
Uh, August twenty-sixth.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, four weeks.
You've got your beer and wine license and everything?
Yeah, that was approved, uh, five weeks early, so I've been dry-worn before I came here, so scrambling to get it all done before the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Electrical, uh, plumbing and pass inspection today, and I've got electrical underway right now, so we're moving.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the site.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
No one approved, three to zero, approved.
Great, guys, thank you.
Good, thank you, good luck.
And this is externally illuminated, right, including the one on the building?
Um, the one building is not illuminated.
Okay.
Except for the door, it's actually, there's an overhang, and it's kind of above the door there.
Yeah, it's just not internally illuminated.
No, no, I mean, I don't, Amir has to share his sign with me, I assume it's, it's from external, but...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, great, thanks, guys.
So, Village Barn Shops, we've got a problem. Um, we had one expected absence tonight, we have one unexpected absence, special permit requires four affirmative votes, so...
We, we can look at your plan, we can give you our input, but we cannot approve it, because we need four members to vote on it. Okay?
Is there any way to get a conditional approval and come back?
Not, not, not with, with only four of us, with only three of us, we can't do anything except give you comments, unfortunately, I apologize, but...
I'm going to call John up and see if he's just...
No, don't bother, no, if he's not here, I'm sure there's a good reason for him.
So, we should get feedback on here.
Yeah.
At least get the feedback, yeah. Borrow this easel here, as soon as this is available.
That's what it's there for.
So, thanks for seeing us again, um, and based on our input at the previous meeting, which was to go up to something about thirty-six inches square, um, we tried that, and, um, I think we felt that likely that was a little bit, still a little bit, um, undersized for, um, for the building, uh, based on your previous comments. So we, we went up again, another, uh, a bit larger, this one is, uh, three foot six square, and, um...
You?
You know, our take on it was that this was a much better fit.
Yeah, I like it, but I think aesthetically, you're nine rather than...
I'm not sure, I just...
That's what Bob watched, they, ours three trees. Well, you have three spaces of roof line in between, so that was what we were going up there, and then the other one that we looked at was one larger one, um, which was quite a bit more cost, um, in part because we needed a crane to get it up onto the roof.
How big is that one?
Two tall.
Oh.
So it's quite a bit larger, um, but, uh, you know, the design team, and I think the owners all thought that the, the, uh, two in this scale is appropriate for the way that it looks.
So what was, the first one, what was the dimensions on the first one?
Thirty-six square, and the height, uh, is...
Yeah, the other option, um, we don't necessarily require cupola. Yeah, the other option, um, we don't necessarily require cupola, we require the roofline be broken up.
How long, how, how long is the building?
Total dimensions, a hundred feet.
So what, uh...
Hundred and four, including the, the...
Seventy-five foot, I think.
What they did at the Sears Plaza was to put in dummy, uh, dormers.
Well, how about a, um, another thought I had, that's one way to go, another thought I had was a, um, a hip gable with a vent at the end? So we, our actual ridge line is only probably about sixty, sixty-five feet, and then we have a, a hip, drop-down hip with a vent.
Oh, instead of, instead of being this, you'd have a hip at each end?
With a, with a vent.
With a vent?
Yeah, so it would come in, you know, something like this, and then you have a little vertical piece with a vent on it.
That'd be fun, I, I'd be good with that.
Yeah, I think...
It's pretty common, you know, traditional...
Quite a Mancer group, have you thought of that? No?
Mancer, no.
Since you're throwing all these things out, I might as well throw that out, because I don't know anything about this stuff they're talking about.
Yeah. Mancer would be, uh, Second Empire, it's a little bit different style, I think, than Colonial.
If it were square, if it were a square building, it would work better, perhaps, but, uh, yeah, I like the hip idea. Part, part of it is just to, to dis, dis, uh, distract from, and, uh, Dr. Zagradnik talks about the sea of asphalt leading in.
Right, yeah, sure.
And you get a, a roof like that, and there's a lot of shingle up there, and, um, yeah, I think just something to break it up, and I, I, you know, I, I agree, the smaller cupolas kinda look like tobacco vents, um, but if you could play with the roof design a little bit, I think that...
Yeah, that...
I wouldn't worry about a cupola if we could get the...
Yeah, if we could do that, you wouldn't, there'd be no cupola, just build, build a roof with a hip at each end.
Yeah.
You just don't want it to look like you glued on something, just to technically meet the criteria of breaking up the roofline. It just looks like it's a plastic thing you glued on.
Couldn't agree more.
Yeah. Well, that would, that, the last record, the comment you had, I think that would be a good one. I think we, I think you'd get affirmative votes on that one.
Okay. Back to the drawing board, as they say, was, um...
Two weeks from tonight.
Two weeks from tonight.
So what do you suggest we bring next time, just for, I know that some...
Well, you could, you could...
For comments.
Depends which one you wanna push.
Whatever makes you happy, whatever's... Whatever gets approved because it's big.
Why, why don't you bring these and that? And we'll, we'll speak how you came here tonight, and, you know, that we talked, and we thought that the hip at each end would be the most, uh, attractive, as opposed to the cupola, just like you said, just to put something on top to break it up, um, the hip is really gonna break, and first of all, it's only sixty-five foot ridge, roofline, you don't, nothing's required beyond that.
Right.
You know, there's no breakup required, so...
Okay.
Okay?
All right, uh, just one other question, why is it, um, I had, I forget, why is it a special permit because it's in the Village?
Village overlay, yes.
And it's site plan approval.
Okay.
Yeah. We appreciate you being so cooperative. Putting up with us.
Do you have any questions?
Name, please, thanks.
Larry Smith. Oh, I work on this. Tell her just to keep the pressure in the room.
Mr. Larry? Got your email? I gave it out to the different departments in town.
Great.
For the one time that we get the stuff into the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission on time for the contract...
I know.
They lost the paperwork.
Here it is, here's your signed copy.
Here's my signed copy, thank you. So he, Larry was kind enough to run around, and he stopped over at my house yesterday, right?
Uh...
Or Friday, Friday, Friday. And, uh, I signed the same thing that we had signed here, and we are all set.
We are, I'll say. Um, you wanna talk conclusionaries, Tony?
Sure, that's what Mr. Roberts is here for.
That's what I thought so. Here, let's go in here. You have one good ear and one bad ear? Should we be on that side? No, you're good, you're fine, this is across, okay.
Okay. What have you found, anything?
Well... This kinda goes hand in hand with another conversation that we had. And it had to do with the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yes.
And I know, so the only reason you really need an Affordable Housing Trust is because you had the in lieu of payment, uh, option.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
My advice to most communities, and especially the most small ones that have in-house capacity issues relative to that, is don't have that option. Go with either the on-site or off-site. And I think if you think through the in lieu of payment option, um, it's very difficult to do, and it's not working in a lot of communities, um, and there are a lot of reasons for that. Number one is, how do you determine what that payment's supposed to be? Is that payment gonna be enough for when you actually wanna utilize it, can you actually do a unit for that payment? You need an entity, like the housing trust, set up to, uh, utilize that, and make that happen. And is that something you really wanna take on? Because that's just a whole nother level of stuff, and I know it's in the model, but I'm not sure you really have to have that. Uh, I mean, the other ways are much easier to do. The others you have with the, with the in payment, in lieu of payment, is, does that sit there until you get additional in lieu of payments to build it up to something where you can actually do something with it? And is it, the bottom line, is it actually gonna create a unit? Or is it just gonna sit there? So I think that's something you might wanna think about.
Okay.
Is whether or not you wanna continue with that option or not.
Okay, understood.
Okay.
But... Okay. What else have you got? On...
The other issue you have then, is, I think this is what your issue is, is when you have the, uh, the hard option where you're actually gonna physically provide for that unit, whether it's a rental or whether it's a sale, um, is you do have to have the monitoring of it, I think that's the problem you raised, is it correct?
Because of bylaws, had it will be...
Yeah, yeah. Well, the, the bylaw lists the housing authority as one of the options, as I read.
Right.
I think you're in there, but there are other options.
Right.
One thing that we have talked about, or I suggested, where I worked, is that's something that we ought to look at taking under capacity of doing, because it's not rocket science, uh, but for, uh, you know, for a fee payment, for, for services, uh, we could, I believe, have a small program set up to do that exact kind of monitoring.
And, and if you could do that for a reasonable fee, that would be absolutely wonderful, because what Mr. Roberts has run into is, there's, there are companies out there that do it, but they're gold.
Well, as you know, one of the reasons you have me is because we are more affordable than other options.
Right.
So that, that, that could actually turn out to be the case. So I think it's a matter of just working through that, uh, that's something that I floated where we work, Ashley Eaton, we have a housing planner, who's the one I kind of thought would be the one to do that. I think, Bill, has she talked to you about the Affordable Housing Trust forum or workshop she's putting together?
Uh...
Name or your name?
I don't recall, maybe she sent me an email or something.
Yeah, 'cause she's trying to put something up about Affordable Housing Trust, uh, early in the, late summer, early fall, um, and I told her that something had, is very interested or wants to take, take a look at. So, uh, that's, you know, one thing we can look at there.
I think, Larry, one of the things that, what you're, what you're saying is not exactly the situation we find ourselves in here.
Sure.
Because the bylaw that you helped it down, or your group...
I did not.
Wasn't you addressing. Craft does, does say it specifically will be to have a housing authority, and my permit says shall.
That, that can easily be modified.
Yeah, but I, I guess I just wanted him to understand that.
Well, what I'm looking at is inclusion provisions for adequate legal monitoring.
And so, before you go forward, that's the inclusionary zoning.
We might have, we might have two different issues here.
During the senior housing overlay.
Right, we, we have two different issues here, we have inclusionary zoning.
Then that you gotta change.
Right. But, that's easy enough to change at town meeting, that's an easy thing to explain, because the housing authority's gonna jump up and down and say, absolutely, we don't wanna give it away, so it's, it's not gonna be a difficult thing to get approved at town meeting. We just need to get the correct words in there, we can easily amend your special permit for the senior housing, that's a piece of cake. What we need to do, those are, to me, that, those are, like Bill likes to use, those are housekeeping issues. What we really wanna do is take care of your needs, and we've got a couple of subdivisions that are, that are in the, in the works, that are gonna qualify for affordable housing, inclusionary zoning. And to me, the senior inclusion, the senior supportable, inclusionary zoning subdivision are one and the same, and we need to get somebody, hopefully, would be great if the PVPC could take it on for a reasonable fee, and that way... Yeah, it costs a couple of bucks to get it done, but a couple of bucks is a whole lot different than the number you threw out to us at one point in time, that's, that's just, that's insane. And that way, everything is going forward in a reasonably smooth manner for a reasonable price, and we're all walking away with the right end result.
I mean, the bylaw thinks it's easy.
Yes.
Cut out of that, base it under that.
Yeah.
This has the flexibility, apparently that one does.
Yeah, that's, that's easy enough to, to change.
That's the easy part, and then once that's done, then you come in to get your permit modified and get that clause.
Right.
And I guess, conceptually, and down the road, if this wasn't a project that has been approved and working to get certificates of occupancy for however long it has, that might be a, a good solution, but I think, you know, we're looking at it in a, a more immediate fix.
Right, but your immediate fix, you've got so many units approved for...
Unless, until we have to...
Eleven COs, right.
For more.
Right, and so with those eleven CO, that's gonna take you into, I'm, I'm assuming sometime next spring, next year? Okay?
We can get this on fall town.
And so we, we could get this on fall town, we could get it at a spring town meeting, in the meantime, we're gonna really, the, the paperwork issue, like I said, is an easy fix, I'm not worried about that. Really wanna get the authority that's going to take this workload on, get that going, so that when we get all this done, you're gonna come in back to us in seven months from now and say, I want ten more COs, and you're kinda sitting there, do I do, do I donate, do I do this with the buildings? You wanna know before you start building those next couple of houses, what's gonna happen? Okay, so...
I guess the question would be, um, why not a, a payment in lieu? I mean, for, for Barry's project now, that he's gone through this process, that they've identified, you know, the acquisition in site cost plus the cost of construction, and he's here saying, I will donate to the town to put into, whether it could be the general fund, um, if there's no Affordable Housing Trust fund, or if at fall town meeting you look to put it in an Affordable Housing, you know, set up and put it in an Affordable Housing Trust fund, because, I mean, from our side of the fence, what I've seen a lot is that the future is pushing towards these fees in lieu, where I think it was Leverett that had an incentive for people moving to the town to subsidize their first year mortgage, I think it was. And, you know, whether or not Hadley looks to do something similar, because the reality of...
So what is it like they're doing that under, their inclusionary zoning bylaw?
Leverett, I, I don't know, I don't know what they're doing it under, but I...
Something just totally different.
But I think that there's a, there's a, so you look at this, there's nothing in the senior housing overlay zoning bylaw that says it has to qualify... Twenty-seven, um, that has to, that says it has to qualify for subsidized housing inventory. So there's nothing saying that we have to go through the lit program, there's nothing about actually going through any entity where you have to say, okay, here's eighty percent of the area median income, and then you have to advertise from Rattle Grove to Hartford, and open it up with the affirmative marketing plan, and I think, you know, we look at the senior housing overlay piece, and it, it seems that it's look, looking to be geared toward Hadley residents, which, if, I guess, one of two things, either a fee in lieu, as I think Barry and Peter had laid out last time, given the amount of money that he would be looking to donate or to give per unit, or alternatively, to have the Hadley Housing Authority manage it, but outside of the subsidized housing inventory, and that gives Hadley Housing Authority, but control and autonomy, and not have to have an affirmative marketing plan, and not have to go through the DHCV, and to be able to, for the most part, um, have it used for Hadley residents, because subsidized housing won't allow more than a seventy percent, if that...
The problem is, we wanna keep the affordable housing to qualify under the chapter forty B.
Sure.
And if it isn't done under the big wide program, it doesn't qualify for the forty B.
Right, that's what, that's what they're looking for, is to stay at that.
We wanna stay, right now, we're at like thirteen percent, we wanna stay within, plus or minus a small mon, number of that thirteen percent.
And I think for Barry's project, I think it's like a five tenths of a percent change, I mean, you would need like six hundred and fifteen new units, year-round housing units, without having any, uh, subs, qualify for the subsidized housing inventory.
And we, and we understand you're sticking up for Barry, we're not trying to stick it to Mr. Roberts either here, 'cause he's been super cooperative on this whole thing, what we wanna do is wanna find... We wanna find the right solution with minimal pain for everybody here. And right now, he's got the eleven approved, and he's got either some funds set aside or something that he could be donating to the fund, and because he's the first person, or first developer, breaking into this, and we found some holes in the problem, what we may end up doing is something, I don't know, I'm gonna just throw an idea out there, some of both. Maybe take some of his money and put it into the fund, and, because I don't wanna upset his apple cart too much either, because we found out these problems, and then for the, some of the, maybe the, some of the further, uh, phases that he's got, maybe he does put in the affordable, if we can get this corrected with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna throw anything in or out at this point in time, and just kinda move forward with his plan, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission hopefully can take this on, that would be great, for a reasonable fee, and then we can decide with you, okay, you've got eleven units, and I understand you don't wanna take and put in, you know, in your last phase, all affordable. But that's the other, we, we don't want, we don't wanna put you in that position either.
Well, you required us for a mount anyways.
Right, okay, so it may be, okay, maybe the last several phases, you put in the amount per phase, and for the first one or two phases that you've already essentially developed, maybe we have the fund that you can donate to, I don't know. All right?
It'd be super fantastic if that's on for birthday, you know, we're required, I mean, it's kinda got me stuck, right?
Yeah, so, I would say, um, yeah, so you've got eleven approved to, for the CO, and they, you're, you're, obviously developed the next few phases, so we wanna do this, and we, we, I at least understand the position that Mr. Roberts is in. He's trying to do it by the law, he's trying to do the right thing by the approval, and he's running through one heck of a law, and the last thing we wanna do is have, you know, him, any, any good developer like Mr. Roberts, or other good developers that we could, that have been coming in to us, and say, okay, now you're gonna put an affordable unit in, but it's gonna cost you twice as much money, or three times as much, as much money to get the right people into those, and it's like, you know, that's ridiculous, because we wanna keep, we wanna get the right people in there, and we want everything to look good, and...
It's gonna happen so rarely, you know, you're gonna have probably in the, in, in a twelve-month period, you'll probably have four, say, we went with the affordable units, in a twelve-month period, you'd be processing four, and then it'll probably be about every eight years, you process another one. So, um, yeah, it seems, to, to your point, Tom, I don't think we have authority to accept the payment in lieu, under the senior housing by... under the senior housing bylaw. Um, under the, um, inclusionary zoning, we do have the authority to accept it into a trust fund, but that, the article that created the trust fund was, was deleted from the bylaw.
So, but the, but the, but the idea of, of putting it into a fund was left in. And like I said, to correct these things at town meeting is, I don't think it's going to be a big deal, as long as we have the right plan in place, that either there will be a fund or there won't be a fund. And if there's no fund, if there is a fund, and this is how it's going to work, if there's no fund, it'll be this group, whatever that may mean, will take over administration of the affordability.
And Hadley Housing Authority, with Larry's group, right?
Right. Or something like that.
He said to me, it's Hadley Housing, and I went, oh, no. But now you're saying, okay, if Larry's group is going to fulfill that mission.
Right.
Well, you, you can't make the housing authority do it if they don't want to. I don't understand why they don't want to.
Yeah, and, and it's, even their state overseers have recommended that they don't do this. And, yeah, in the big cities, Springfield, Worcester, Boston, the housing authority, they probably have a, uh, there, they have so many affordable units, they probably have a group within the city doing that. Well, when you've got, you know, whatever Hadley has, it's a whole different story, and much like most of towns around here. Um, they don't have the, the man, the, the people power to administer something like this.
I guess maybe two comments and, and a response. I, I guess we would suggest that if we were to pay into a fund, it would be as mitigation, which I, I think it would be a gift 44, 53A, instead of, you know, in, we'll call it in lieu, but I think it would just be mitigation, but potentially a condition that the planning board would put on a modified special permit to allow Barry to pay into that fund instead of actually providing those units.
But the bylaw doesn't allow for in lieu payment.
Understood, but we're not looking to have a payment in lieu. We're looking to have.
But regardless of what you do, or how much money you give them, this bylaw still requires that you have to provide 15% of the units.
But it also has the Hadley Housing Authority to administer it.
That's right.
And, and so we, we want to correct that, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
But you, but you can't just sit here and create a hybrid, trying to buy your way out of it, where the bylaw doesn't give you that option. I mean, if the bylaw had, you know.
The bylaw also doesn't require that we qualify on a subsidized housing inventory.
We wouldn't need that whole exercise.
Right.
We wouldn't need that expense. We wouldn't have to create all that.
Right.
Because the bylaw doesn't say.
Does it not, does not say this. We will work on addressing the bylaw, which, again, I get back to, is a minor issue. We're really going to find out, how do we make the system work?
Yeah.
The way we need it to and the way we want it to. Once we do that, correcting the paperwork is nothing.
And maybe even like TDR, I know that you have the option of either donating the land or paying into a fund, or maybe something, like at least to give.
Yeah, it's, 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 to T, to T, we were, we were figuring that the donating to the fund would be very similar to the TDR. The TDR already had a pre, already had a fund.
Sure.
That the town was putting money into to match. And all we did was add more to the fund. This has no fun to begin with. I mean, yeah, we could give it to the Hadley Housing Authority for maintenance, but that's not what we wanted to do. We were trying to actually add to the housing stock.
And that's specifically what this bylaw says, this particular bylaw, it's like the senior housing. They want X number of units set aside for affordable seniors.
Right. So.
So is there a way, the entire affordability component of the senior housing is contained in one paragraph? And then we have a three-page section on inclusionary zoning.
Yes.
Um, so first of all, is there some way we can?
Yes.
Make it, make it one?
We can try to make. I like not having duplication. And if you can do something in three pages instead of seven.
I agree, yeah.
And, and this is something that, you know, in, in a perfect world, it, it would have hoped we would have caught it, but we spent so much time on all the other aspects of senior housing that.
Does the state law define what senior housing is? How old you have to be? Yeah, 55. Yes, that's well-defined state.
I mean, I, I have always said, you can write the best bylaw in the world, but you don't know whether it's going to work until that first application comes out.
Right.
That's exactly right. Because that's where you actually have to run through the steps of it after you get the. Crack moments.
To Mr., Mr. Roberts', um, good, good faith.
Yeah.
He's working with us as opposed to working against us on this. And we're working with him. We're trying to find the right solution to satisfy what the, what the needs and wants are without making anybody too much out of, out of focus here.
Right.
And, uh, you know, he's been extremely cooperative with us, and we much appreciate that.
It's been a long time, I remember. When was it? You first came in here, so you guys are actually sitting over here at that time.
Remind me then what an affordable unit would cost?
If I was to qualify under the inventory.
One bedroom?
One bedroom, two seats.
So you're, you know, what kind of development? Yours is a kind of, kind of any of the building?
So that makes it more interesting too, because it's not a rental. Winfield, for instance, has multiple subsidized apartments. They must have someone on staff who.
Well, the interesting thing is going to be, you know, when you're out, you sell them all, and the association takes over, and now they're fully responsible for it.
And the question is, who monitors it?
Well, and, and that's.
You have to have a relationship.
To your point, Larry, the, I think it is worth having an Affordable Housing Trust Fund because, just, just because of the nature of these units, they're going to get forgotten, they're going to get overlooked, and it's going to be a, i- if we, if we go for the in-kind.
Right.
Versus in cash, you know, put, put one in each, uh, according to a formula, put them into each, uh, phase.
Yeah.
And then, we still don't have anyone who's watching it. Um, uh, but.
Well, you could. I mean, if, if.
Let's assume somebody pays for it, and the next year he wants to put it on the market at 250. Who's going to monitor that transaction?
And it's, it's the association that should be monitoring that. So there should be something in the.
The association's going to be looking at, for sale ads in the paper?
Well, at this point, yeah, that will be the responsibility, and, but they should.
Other side's otherwise.
Well, yeah, I mean, and, and. If it was on the outside, now I would. That's since they have a little monitor.
Well, I know that.
But still, I know, that affects the whole development.
Sure does.
I mean, if that, if you have, who's going to say, oh, yeah, this is something I'll take on, is to monitor the other affordable units. That's why, I mean, I push it for this payment in lieu, because I think for this project, it makes sense.
Well, the.
But you're going to take that same argument for every project.
Yeah.
And, and that, maybe it does though. I mean, you look over, you look at Amherst, they don't have a, a payment in lieu. They have an Affordable Housing Trust fund, but they don't have a payment in lieu provision in their inclusionary zoning bylaw. And I can't tell you how many developers come in and say, is there a way? Because they're having issues with financing, because there are people, there are lenders who don't want to finance these affordable.
Amherst has a housing planner, and they have a fair housing committee. So they have the in-house capacity to administer something like.
But they also, Amherst, you have the Amherst Housing Authority, which charges for affirmative marketing plan, $9,000 just for that plan, and then however much, $2,500 per unit to qualify it initially, and then an annual fee for those rental units. And so, you know, it, it gets costly for the developers.
It's a concept. It's a really nice concept, it looks easy on paper. But when you walk it through the specifics of how it's going to be administered, it's difficult.
Like Joe said, the devil's in the details to get something like this, because that's one, it's a piece of cake.
Yeah.
And I've had people, I've had seniors come up to me and ask me, when is the affordable, what, what's going on with the affordable units in the senior housing that's over on East Street? And I said, well, right now it's in limbo. I said, we're not sure what's going to happen, because what we've talked about. And.
Fair number of your seniors say, well, can I be assured it's going to be, I have the government, it's going to be me, basically, right? If I can qualify. And I said, right now I can't tell you, but if I have, as I'm talking about, I can't, my hands are locked.
Right. So. Person who owns a senior housing unit, is not going to be able to market this place. He's going to have to sell it back to somebody.
Yeah, you're, you're going to have to buy it.
Turn it back.
The range, the sliding.
Yeah.
That's part of the, that's part of the task of whoever.
He's going to have to sell back to the assoc, he's going to have, is he going to sell back to the association? And the association, again, looks for somebody that's.
That would be one of them.
So, coming out of this.
Thank you, addressing our two bylaws, and maybe on them.
Yes, I will do that.
Agree. Not necessarily one bylaw.
No, but it should be consistent.
Inclusionary section.
Yeah.
Reference for something and get rid of what's into the senior, so that at least it's exactly consistent.
I mean, you are correct. Your senior, your bylaw is a variation of the inclusionary zoning. It's just you taking a specific type of housing style, and, uh.
Yeah, well, we could just.
Just let a bunch of stuff off.
Yeah, we could just leave the existing paragraph number and just say, for inclusionary zoning C, and then refer back and have something in the other one.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I, I think the trust fund is worth exploring, because our experience with transfer of development rights is that we have never had anyone negotiate a direct purchase.
Exactly. Uh, and you are the only TDR program that I know of in this area of the state that actually works.
Are there, are there any other affordable houses in Hadley? Are, are there any other affordable?
But those aren't condos, those are rentals.
Those are all rentals.
That's a different, that's a little easier.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So you can't mark.
I mean, because the rental is, you know, we got this deal, and this is the rent, and you have to meet these equal limits.
Well, there are a lot.
So there's nothing, nobody else in Hadley actually owns something which they can sell under this bylaw?
Um, Winfield, Winfield, a lot of condos.
Okay.
But there are.
The name was, have a management.
Those are all the, those are on the retirement side, and they're all in Amherst. I'm pretty sure.
Oh, wow.
Okay, okay, I, I know that there's condos, I don't know which part of the town.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure there are, all the condos are in Amherst, and the family housing in this. They have senior rental housing and family housing in Had.
Okay.
But the con, rent, the retirement, or the senior condos are all in Amherst.
Okay. So then the deed that this person gets, whatever, they got a condo interest, it's going to have to have a restriction, and ask how much they can sell it for, supposedly.
Correct.
Yeah.
I thought that it does. And it changes, so what they can sell it for will change based upon the interest rates. Because they have to, whoever's looking to buy it can only borrow up to 97% of the value. And then what they pay per month has to be within a certain range. So Barry has to think about the condo fees, and you're going to have these subsidized units who are paying $100, and the other unit owners who are paying maybe $300, just because, to make the math work. And if the interest rates go up to 8%, all of a sudden that $157,000 sale price drops down very dramatically, because otherwise, they're not going to be able to afford.